Everyone, we'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, September 20th, 2016. And Item B, Call for a Meeting Set Tuesday, October 4th, 2016, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. There are motion to approve A and B. Motion by Boyle, seconded by Craft. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to Resolutions D through G. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Rogers, seconded by Duda. Does that include adjournment? Questions? Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I had a question. We are denying, the Treasurer's Office denying a tax exemption for the American Red Cross because they filed late. And I was just speaking with Mr. Kavanaugh, and he told me that they have a service that files these things, and they didn't file it in time. So I think, you know, I mean, it's the American Red Cross, they're not, you know, delivering pizza or something, so I think we ought to, I'd like to make a motion to grant them the exemption for that vehicle.
Second. I'm trying to find the number on that.
I'm sorry, I had it.
Yeah, okay.
Mark Craft was talking to me, and I couldn't.
Okay, it is the only item on?
I think it's G.
G. So we'll take G separate, then?
Please.
Okay, so the motion would include Resolutions D through F?
Move for approval.
Second. Give us one second, please. Yes, as usual.
It's your guys' motion, and is it okay if we take G out? Okay. Well, we have to take G then, before we adjourn, and take adjournment out, yes.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay. And now I need a motion for Item G.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, motion passes.
Motion to grant the exemption.
Motion by Boyle, seconded by Morgan, does that include adjournment?
Yes, it does.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes.
Please vote.
One second, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, start, start, start.
If I can get my light on.
Yep. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I'm just curious, we like to do what feels good rather than what the law says so often, and I'm just curious why this is being recommended for disapproval, and we choose to do what we want anyway. I'm just wondering why the Treasurer says this shouldn't be approved.
Well, I can answer that.
I'm sure.
Let me speak for the Treasurer's Office.
Tim Kavanaugh, Chief Deputy Treasurer. The deadline was not honored for submission, it was a month late. We are obligated then to deny the application, and it is then forwarded to you for action.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, and I do respect that and understand that too, except that, you know, it's what I've looked into and how I feel about, and I think this board has consistently agreed that the very basic right of these organizations to tax-exempt status because of the work that they do is not some statutory, it's founded in the Constitution. You're involved in nonprofit work, and for the betterment of society and so forth, you're entitled to that as a part of the way we treat these corporations. And this one is very obvious, others are as well, but this one's really obvious, it's the American Red Cross, and it's a vehicle that would be used to, as I understand, to transfer blood supplies. So I just think it rises above this technical difficulty, and that's why I'm asking that we grant them the tax exemption.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
No other further questions or comments? Please vote. And did you get that it included adjournment?
Yes. Thank you.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item 1A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Commissioners Meeting Held Tuesday, September 20th, 2016. And Item B, Approval of Claims Submitted for Payment Process Through Tuesday, September 27th, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Morgan, seconded by Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next is the consent agenda, Items A through M. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Craft, seconded by Duda. Any questions or comment? Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I was reading the agenda pretty carefully last night, and it's kind of a small item, but as a lawyer, it makes me pretty crazy. On Item K, I mentioned it to our legal counsel, there is a blank page, and I believe it's in the, it's one of the resolutions, possibly is K-2. And it's the sort of thing, nothing's going to be inserted, I'm sure, but when you have proof of contract with a blank page, obviously you're, something could be changed or inserted, and I just think it's something that needs to be pointed out and possibly removed. I'm sorry to be such a nitpicker, but I'm pretty sure that's where it is. And I think it's, if it's not that one, it's, I'm pretty sure that's where it is. So I guess what I'd like to ask is for legal counsel to?
Seven, page seven, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, maybe there's something on the back.
That's what I'm wondering, if that's just the signature page, and it got?
Got reversed. I think if they would just put in their intentionally left blank, that would make me feel better. Sorry to bring things to a screeching halt.
You mean going forward, Commissioner put intentionally left blank? We can certainly do that.
Okay, good deal. I think that would answer my problem.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
No other questions or comments?
None, from me.
Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to committees, the first being the Budget. It's the Budget Finance, Budget Report as presented. If there's no questions or comments. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'm sorry, I did that.
Administrative Services?
I just wanted to remind everybody that immediately following this meeting, the Administrative Services Committee will be meeting upstairs on 903 for a briefing on the public safety bond issue. We are in full-fledged public information mode on that, and so I urge everybody with an interest in that to attend. We'll be talking about the bond issue in its entirety, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions from the public at that time. Thank you.
Next is the Criminal Justice. There's just the minutes from our last meeting under there, the Health and Human Services. There is two, Item Receive and Review Adopted 2016 Amendment 2 to the Douglas County Health Center Community Mental Health Center Board of Trustees Bylaw. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Duda, seconded by Craft, Commissioner Boyle?
Could someone discuss what this is about, what it's for? I've read it, but I just want to be sure I understand it.
Jim Torville, Administrator, Douglas County Health Center. Which item was it again, Commissioner?
I'm sorry?
Which item did you have a question about?
This is the one that's, Item 1, Receive and Review Adopted 2016 Amendment 2 to the Douglas County Health Center Community Mental Health Board of Trustees Bylaws.
Yes, all we were trying to do there is to make the bylaws equal for the health center as well as the community mental health center. In the bylaws that were approved last year, the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center could go ahead and approve policies and procedures, the Sherri Glassnap could do that. We could not do it for the long-term care division, so therefore, we wanted to make them equal, make them the same. Otherwise, all the policies and procedures would have to come to you for approval and review and editing. So we're just trying to make things equal between CMHC and DCHC.
But the amendment doesn't read that way. It says, "The administrator of Douglas County Health Center shall be licensed by the state of Nebraska," and is charged with the responsibilities that's applicable set forth in such and such attached as Exhibit D. "The administrator of Douglas County Health Center is also charged with the responsibility to review and approve all Douglas County Health Center policies and procedures at least once every three years."
That's the part where, excuse me, I'm sorry. That was the part we're trying to add to the bylaws.
Okay, why?
So that I can approve policies and procedures for the health center. Sherri Glassnap can do that for the mental health center right now. It was just left out when we revised the bylaws last year.
Well, let me ask you a question here. There's quite a bit of controversy about the smoking, no-smoking policy that went in. So you would be the sole authority, is that what this does?
No, I wouldn't be the sole authority. Not something that large, no, sir.
Well, what's the authority here?
Would be for just, if there's an update to a policy regarding, for instance, the one that was just updated recently was regarding not taking pictures within the health center. Employees can't carry their cellphones with them to take pictures within the health center. And that was a policy we had to revise, otherwise CMS was going to come out, and if they found it, they would fine us for that, so.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you well.
Okay, excuse me.
Are you saying they can't take pictures? Why is that?
Employees cannot take pictures with their cellphones in the facility of residence, and that was happening throughout the United States. And Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services made that, prohibited that, and they said if they came in, it would be up to a $20,000 fine, so.
Okay, so let me ask you that. So are you the, will you be the person who says you can't do that anymore, or does this go to the Board of Trustees?
I would be the person with, to do that.
Well, do you have any intention of bringing that to the Board of Trustees for discussion and comment?
Certainly. You've got something like that, that large?
Can we put that in here, subject to approval by the Douglas County Board of Trustees?
We can do that.
I mean, I think these things, you know, I know there's a move, I think there's a move to delegate authority of the county board to the Board of Trustees, so contracts can be approved and so forth, and I don't even know if it'd ever show up on our agenda. I'm real concerned about this closing, closing public access and transparency.
Contracts would come to the Board of Commissioners to be approved.
So what would?
This would be just if there's a policy regarding?
That's a separate issue.
Yes, sir, it is.
But I don't know what policies, how far this goes. I mean, it says, "Approve all Douglas County Health Center policies and procedures."
It's been that way since before I came, that the Administrator could approve the policies.
Then why are we writing it? What are they writing?
Because otherwise, we have to revise the bylaws. That's what the county attorney told us we had to do. We can either make an amendment to the bylaws, or we can revise the bylaws, one or the other.
Okay, but if it's already in there, why are we doing this?
It was not, it's not in there, it was granted, a permission granted by Chair Duda to meet to do that.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
And if he wishes to do that, that's fine, we wouldn't then have to put anything in the bylaws.
Well, I believe in oversight, I really do. And transparency, and I want people to know what's going on. There are a lot of people there, the loved ones, there are people being treated for all sorts of things. I think more, more discussion is better, and making decisions on your own need to be filtered through, and are they still be reported to the Board of Trustees? Would the Board of Trustees have final say? It doesn't say that. Says that you, you would be, the Administrator would be charged with the responsibility to review and approve all DCHC policies and procedures at least once every three years. Could you, let me ask you a question. Could you have changed the no-smoking policy yourself if this was enforced?
Something that large, I probably could, but I would not.
Why? It says you can.
I know that, but something that has that far-reaching impact, I would probably not do that.
Then we ought to say that in here. Something that has far-reaching impact would not be decided. I don't know. I mean, I just don't, you know, there's always, we've had discussions about parking, things that are simple, that turn into big discussions. I'm just not for, not for this without public review and the ability of employees to participate in policies that affect them. I understand the photographing, that's fine, but I think it ought to be, you know, do they know why?
This was on the agenda last week at the Board of Trustees, and it was approved, Commissioner.
Well, I was there, and I mean, the point is that I talked to Ms. Lynch and asked her what was going on. It seemed to me, and I expressed my concerns to legal counsel, that it seemed like I had a feeling that there was a rumble to shift authority to the Board of Trustees that would never see the light of county board meeting, discussing some things, and that's what I'm concerned about. Yeah.
I think that what, if we do that for this, then I think we would have to do that for all of our department heads, because, say for instance, the Director of Corrections, he has a lot of authority to change policies on a day-to-day basis within the facility. So say it is parking. He would have the ability to say whatever he wanted to say about parking without really having to bring it to the board, but there are times that he has brought it to the board.
Right.
So any department, health department, I mean, you name them, all of them have the authority that Mr. Torville is asking for in this resolution. It's just that we have to do it this way because of the accreditation and the bylaws portion of business. So I don't know if it's anything really different than what we currently are doing right now with any of our other department heads, but if we change this to have that be different than the other ones, then I think we need to go revisit all the authorities that were given the department heads in this regard, county-wide.
Well, I don't think, you know, if we already have it, I don't know why we're writing it, and if he's already done this, I don't know why we're doing this, so.
Because it has to be in the bylaws. It's different. Board of Trustees is different in the sense that we have to have a set of bylaws, and in the bylaws, it had been written, this section had been written for the Director of the Community Mental Health Center to be able to do this, but it wasn't for the long-term care, short-term rehab section of the building, so we were just making it the same within the bylaws.
Well, does, does the Department of Corrections have this written authority?
No.
Okay, well, then, I don't understand why.
Because they already, they just understood they do.
It what?
It's just understood they do.
Well, that's, the present situation is here, they understood, we understand that they do, that he does.
But we don't have bylaws for the other ones, as we do this one.
Okay, well, I think there's something afoot here that I don't really like. I just want to have more transparency.
I promise it's not.
I want to have accountability.
Yep.
And I want the public to know what's going on out there.
Yep.
And we have a lot of, let me lay it all out on the table, we have a lot of complaints from employees about a lot of things. You run a big operation. That happens with all big departments, you're not unique. But they need to have a way to redress their grievances. And, you know, I'm concerned that, I mean, I know they can come to the, come to the meeting and all that, but they're not going to. And a lot of times, we get, you know, anonymous things, we get anonymous things about corrections, so that isn't helpful at all, because we can't respond, obviously, if they're anonymous. But I just want to be sure that these controversial decisions that you would be making, if you've made them in the past, and you have, there have been some public, some ability of employees and members of the, it comes to the public forefront. That's why I've always pushed for the Board of Trustees meeting being here. I know that it's recorded and all that, and we just approved a contract to do all that, but coming here is a lot different, and it's, to me, I don't know why, with all the good things happening at the health center and with the rehab operation, why you wouldn't want that publicity? I don't get it, but I've been blocked every time I try to bring it here. It doesn't work. So I'm real skeptical of this, and I don't, I don't understand, I'd like to see something that, you know, if you have been approving all Douglas County Health Center policies and procedures, then I don't see why you need this. And I know there's bylaws and stuff, but.
And that's the only reason?
Okay, well, I sense the vote's going to be six to one, so we'll just let it rip, but I just really, I want you to, I hope that you will come with, come to us at this board meeting, even though you can sit over in the comfort of the Board of Trustees and get things done. I want you to be very public with what's going on out there, and I hope this doesn't turn into something bad.
Appreciate that.
Okay? The public needs to know what's going on.
Very good.
Thank you.
With that, I can't remember if there was a motion or?
You know there was, but we did not, we didn't catch it, any of the three of us, so I apologize.
Commissioner Duda made the motion. Yes, and there's, I need a second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Craft seconded it. Any further questions or comments on Item F-1?
Please vote, though.
Seeing none, please vote. But Mikey, you already voted, yeah.
I know. Well, I was at the board, so things flew through.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I talked to legal counsel afterwards.
So weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, unless there's questions or comments on that? Commissioner Boyle?
I'd really like to ask that, I thought we had a change where it doesn't say terminated at the top of that report. A lot of people who leave for various reasons, but the report has kind of eased back into that, people who've been terminated, and I just, not all of them are terminated, and I, you know, you see what I mean?
Discharged?
What?
Discharged?
Well, I think I'd say, you know, left.
Left? Separated?
Separated.
Okay. All right, we'll say separated.
I just, it's just something that.
Okay, I'll work with Karen on that one.
Dan, did you have something you want to say?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
All right. So we'll change that. Anything else?
Thanks. No, I'm sorry to be such a nitpicker today.
That's all right, we'll change it, that's no biggie.
Worse than usual.
That's no biggie. Just latest issues. Commissioner Kavanaugh wanted to talk about a meeting he had. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Just an update on the discussions that we're having relative to possible Turk legislation in the 2017 Nebraska Legislative Session. Senator McCallister invited me and representatives of NACO and Turk to meet yesterday in Lincoln and discuss possible amendments to existing Turk statutes. Everybody knows we're not happy with the most recent Turk ruling raising property tax valuations on 70,000 homeowners in Douglas County and lowering them on others without our input or approval. And that case currently is on appeal to the Nebraska Supreme Court, but in the meantime, we're in discussions with Senator McCallister and with NACO's help, the representatives of Turk, to see if adjustments can be made going forward. And I invite my fellow commissioners to participate in this, and I've talked to the Chairman about joining us in future meetings. This is in the very preliminary stage of development, but it's a good way to resolve our concerns relative to Turk, and I think that Senator McCallister should be commended for his heads-up approach to this issue. And so I'm just giving you that update, and there'll be more to come. Thanks.
And as reported before, we should probably see if, because Senator Craighead has also been working on that, so we should probably have some joint discussions on the work that's being done on that issue. But it is probably going to be one of our biggies this year. Discussion, Approval of Clarification, Technical Renaming of Dodge Street in Omaha, Nebraska. This is brought by Commissioner Rogers. Did you want to say anything?
I want to thank you, Madam Chair. Many of you, I've got some calls from Ms. Danette Snyder, who's the Membership and Projects Director for the historic General Dodge House. And let me give you some context. I guess, for the years I've been here, I've always thought Dodge was named in the lineage of the NP Dodge family, General Glenville Dodge. And I guess the last 20-plus years, I've had the privilege of knowing the family and really thought it was in that vein until recently. And so 1996 is celebrating General Glenville's Dodge death, and it was brought to my attention that it's actually named after Senator Augustus Dodge from Iowa. So when Ms. Snyder reached out to me in honor of memorializing that 100 years, they wanted to try to make the change official. And the hook is, they have to submit it to the state per, state rules by October 1st, which is Saturday. And one of the rules is, you have to either get it approved by the county board and/or the city council, all the commissioners who are lined along the path of Dodge Street. So that's why it's on the board agenda now. So what I wanted to do, as I guess Snyder said, it'd probably be the cheapest renaming, that it is no, no cost to change name, just a clarification to some degree. So that's really the essence of it, is to make it officially what I think most people think it is, other than Augustus C. Dodge. It'd be General Glenville Dodge Street technically, and by less passionate, it'll allow them to put it into the package to the state to name it, to officially rename it. So that's the gist of it to some degree, and they're here from the Dodge House to talk on anything, if anybody's got any questions. So that's the gist of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'd just like to second Commissioner Rogers' proposal here. The Dodge family is one of the first and founding families of Omaha and has a long and distinguished career spanning generations of contributions to the city and the state. And I know that representatives of the Dodge family are here today, and it came as a surprise to me as well that we weren't commemorating Glenville Dodge and naming Dodge Street, but rather an obscure U.S. Senator from Iowa who no one's ever heard of, I don't think. So this is a long overdue, I guess, amendment to our Main Streets designation, and it's certainly one that I can enthusiastically support. The Dodge House in Council Bluffs is a jewel of historic preservation in the metropolitan area, and I think representatives of the Dodge House are here today, and I'd like to thank them for reaching out to us and bringing this to our attention, and hopefully we can resolve this in speedy fashion. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I will echo what Mr. Kavanaugh said, that Dodge family has distinguished itself in a number of ways, public service for their, many of the members of the family, as well as a really very well-respected real estate company that is well-known for fair dealing and really high ethics. So this is something that should be corrected, and so I'm pleased to vote yes as well. I'm glad you brought this to our attention. Thank you.
Do you guys want to go ahead and present anything, or just, we have a couple more? Did you want to say something, Commissioner Morgan?
I was just going to say, you know, wanted to thank you for your calls. I talked to you a couple times and appreciate it, because like Commissioner Boyle said, the Dodge family here in Omaha has been a great community leader and servant and everything else. So it's good.
Great, thank you. Any other, and again, you're more than welcome to?
Do you have any questions, specific questions or anything?
I have a brief question.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Or, sorry, Commissioner Rogers? Okay, okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Would you give your name, please?
Danette Heinz-Snyder.
And you are affiliated with the Dodge House, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When we spoke the other day, we were talking about the history that went into the naming of Dodge Street, and I wondered if you could give us just some of the background on how we came to the position where we are, where all of us thought it was Glenville Dodge Street, and in fact, it was Augustus Caesar Dodge Street.
Well, I've been at the Dodge House for, well, since 2000, and I would say almost every visitor, especially from the metropolitan area, when they come over, and one of the first things, well, what do you know about General Dodge and his brother, NP Dodge? And they say, "Well, of course, every time we drive on Dodge Street, we always think of the Dodge family." And I said, "Well, I'm sorry, but sadly, you would be wrong." So after a while, we thought, "Well, why don't we correct that then?" And give? So, after a while, we thought, "Well, why don't we correct that then and give the recognition to an honor of the Dodge family?" Certainly, General Grenville Dodge and his brother, NP Dodge, did so much for the metropolitan area, and so, we just think we should not rewrite history, but correct that little thing in history, because everybody that we've ever talked with thinks that it's already named for General Dodge and his brother, NP Dodge.
Well, thank you, and before Commissioner Rogers closes, I too just want to echo the thanking the NP Dodge family for being a part of our community and for being here today. I asked Danette to invite them because I thought it was a big deal for them to be here, and I really appreciate you being here to watch all of this. I know it's not the final, but it's in the process, and we really appreciate you being a part of this, and we can say we're making history today. So, thank you for bringing it, and Commissioner Rogers, thank you for bringing it. Commissioner Duda?
If I may, this is so fitting and appropriate. It is righting a little bit of a wrong that has existed for a long time. The Dodge family, not only were they instrumental in Omaha's foundation and of course, bringing the railroad here, which played a little bit of a role in things, but even since then, I mean, the, I live next door to Dodge Park and Hummel Park. Those were both donated to the city of Omaha by the Dodge family. Joseph Hummel had been the Omaha Parts and Rec Director and was a friend of one of the Dodges, and they have continued throughout the history of our city to play an integral role in our development, and this is wonderful, overdue. Thank you for making this happen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
And I too. I too, a lifelong resident, always thought it was named after the Omaha Dodge family. And I'm curious, sure would be nice if we could make this retroactive.
Rewrite history.
That's right. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, I wanted, you know, you all's feelings were right. I mean, I almost felt like this was kind of Congressional Record Day, so I wanted to just officially read some stuff before we end, because I thought it was apropos. Pronounced Grenville and NP Dodge's father Silvanius?
Silvanus.
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 They gave me some information, so I just wanted to briefly read some of this, because I thought it was interesting. It said, "Silvanus Dodge was an early Justice of the Peace and lawyer from Omaha City, would travel to have him hear their cases. And Mr. Dodge was obligated to remain on the Elkhorn Farms as they had not yet been secured by entry." It said, "In the fall of 1857, he was elected one of the county commissioners of Douglas County, receiving the largest vote, 975 except one, on the state and county ticket. And he served previously in 1855 on the first grand jury of Douglas County, also on the U.S. jury." And there was a book that I crossed, and I shared it with the family, and I wanted to read passages out of it, because one of, one of the facts was that Augustus C. Dodge had some anti-union sentiments back then, and their family was active in that. So, there's this book called The Military Mediator about Whitney Young, and being that the Urban League is tied into the district, I wanted to read three pieces out of it to kind of, to line this up with the Dodge family. And one sense of it talks about Whitney Young first got here, and it says, "Equally to support Whitney Young when he first got here as the executive director of the Urban League in encounters with racially insensitive employers and proprietors of various public establishments with two young white entrepreneurs, William Ramsey and N. Phillips Dodge," which is the father of Sandy and the grandfather of Nate. And then on 67, it talks about another point, where it says, "Dodge attempted to deliberate other Omaha Realtors, but those efforts met less success. He managed to get anti-discrimination resolutions enacted by the local and state real estate boards during his presidency of the latter group. He also persuaded the local organizations to go on record against blockbusting. None of these efforts, however, resulted in any substantive improvement. In fact, when he accompanied Father Marco, who at the time was creating the stand with black families moving into white neighborhoods, the real estate boards concluded that Dodge was nuts." And it says, on the last page in 78, on 79, which I think it says, "Dodge serves on the Omaha Urban League's committee, Housing Committee, in 1949, and became aware of the shocking conditions of housing for Negro citizens. He accepted an invitation to join the League's board in 1950, and later succeeded Kennedy as president of the Omaha affiliate. Young was cognizant of his friend's important family name and his invaluable connections as a board member of the local utilities company, as a bank trustee, and as a director of the real estate board. Young's relationship with Dodge rested on a mutual regard for their friendship and on Young's desire to use Dodge's considerable civic and business influence to open doors for Omaha blacks. There was, there was nothing manipulative about Young's objective. Phil Dodge fully understood the narrative of their relationship, and he asked, and he acquiesced." And there, and the, and the definition of acquiesce says, "He to assent tactically, tactically." So, he knew what his role was to some degree in influence, and extended to it to try to move for equalization in the city. So, I just felt it was worth noting that to the record as we get ready to move this to the day. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. With that, would you like to make the motion, Commissioner Rogers?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Please vote.
Commissioner Rogers, that was fantastic. Thank you. Ladies, for bringing this for us, to us. The timing was wonderful, very appropriate, and to the NP Dodge family and family members, this was very enlightening. I thoroughly enjoyed what Commissioner Rogers said, and I think all of Omaha needs to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it, and let us know what happens at the state level.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I'd just personally like to say that I have been in a position to deal with elected officials for a long, long, long time, and this county board is above, like, clear up here, of getting back to me and listening and taking action. I have never had anybody do it so quickly and so sincerely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank, thank you. And thank you again.
Also, thank you for calling us and us following back to you. So, that was very good.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I want to thank them, but also Nate Dodge is here, and I, my, I don't have my glasses, so if you'd want to step down and...
And Sandy.
Oh, Sandy, my God. Would you please come to the podium, the two of you? We want to hear what you have to say.
He didn't want to.
Now, this doesn't mean that you can, this doesn't mean you can drive 90 miles an hour on Dodge Street now, just because it's yours. Yeah. Please give your name, and I'd like to hear your remarks. You're a wonderful family. My experience has been terrific with all of you. So, would you please give your name, and then if you'd like to make some comments?
I'm Sandy Dodge, and I just want to tell you how grateful we are that you took this action this morning. And I, I was present with my father a number of times when Whitney Young would come to our house and they would talk. He was a wonderful guy. And one thing, just one incident about that, I was at Central High at the time, and my dad was getting calls at the office in which the, whoever was on the other line was saying that we know where your son is, and if he doesn't come home from Central, why you're gonna know something, and why, why he didn't make it. My dad never told me that, and I think he had enough judgment to say that these were people that were angry at what he was trying to do, and this was, this was groundbreaking work at the time, and we still have a hell of a lot more to go. But I admire the fact that he didn't make a big deal out of it, and obviously, I lived through it. But that was the kind of guy he was. He saw something was wrong, and he felt he had to make it right. And so, the fact that you've made this, this motion this morning, we appreciate very much. Nobody realizes that we stand on the shoulders of people that came before us as much as when people who have the same name did a lot more than frankly, I think I did. And so, I just want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack, for being here. Do I say anything?
I'm Nate Dodge. As Sandy said, we're not here to argue the history of why indeed it was named or not named way back when. We can only say we appreciate the motion the board has made. And as Danette had said, this is an incredible group. I can look at each of you, and I know each of you in a, in a different way, and I, and thank you for this honor, and thank you for allowing us to come down and see this. I think on the General's 100th anniversary of his death, would it, would it a nice thing to do? And again, the General himself was an incredible man, and I think that what happens at the Dodge House Museum is great historical work. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Sandy, one interesting thing, you and I have known each other for a long time. Not sure you know this, but my dad worked at NP Dodge here on 51st and Dodge back in about, thinking 1951, 52, with Bill.
We have room for you to come back.
He's speechless.
Let me get my resume. Thank you, guys. Thanks a lot for being such a great family in this community for so long, and I know Katie tremendously involved for many, many years, and I just want to thank you. It's a great, great family and history.
Well, we appreciate it. Thanks.
Can you come by so we can shake your hand? It's an honor to know you.
Sandy, it's great to see you.
All right. With that, we will move to item three of the Human Resources Committee, a presentation of the 2017 Wellness Program Design and Incentives. Hello, Kathy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathy Adair, Employee Benefits. Let me get my slideshow here. This is gonna be twofold. I'm actually kind of going to give you some history of our wellness program. I haven't done that for a while, just kind of show you where we were, where we are today, and where we'd like to go, because we're, we're very proud of our wellness program. Let me get, how do I do the slideshow? Back in 2000, in December of 2008, this county board passed a resolution to develop a wellness program, which was quite scary for me. I wasn't expecting you all to do that. I'm very happy today that you did. So, what we did, we created a wellness committee. That committee's kind of evolved and changed over time. Okay. So, how do I, just click? Okay, thank you. Here is our wellness committee today. Commissioner Mary Ann Borgeson and Commissioner Kavanaugh are both members of that committee, as well as all of these other individuals. We meet every other month or about to discuss different wellness programs and things that we would like to do. When we first started the program, back in 2009, actually, we created a logo. This was all voted on by all of those individuals that were on that committee at that time. We created the name, which I think is very appropriate. We created a mission statement, "Building healthier lives for Douglas County employees by empowering lifestyle change through education and support." And then our just little logo, you always see any time that we produce any type of paperwork or flyers, is our commit to be fit little saying. So, from 2008 up until July of 2014, we were just as a committee trying to do different things that would help our employees, educate our employees on wellness, and get them actively involved. Then in July 1st of 2014, we partnered with Vavari, which is a leading health management service provider. They provide a online portal website that all eligible employees, eligible employees being those that carry our health insurance coverage, are able to go out there, register on this site, and do a numerous amount of activities. It's a health management program that is based on a point system. Since July of 2014, they run the program each year. It's a new program, starting in January. Since we only had six months into the program, we did a 150-point requirement. Under that point requirement, that they would have to earn those points by December 1st of that calendar year, there were two mandatory items that we needed to have employees do to start tallying their points. One being the Member Health Assessment, which is a questionnaire that they fill out on their portal, and the other being the Biometric Screening. The Biometric Screening, we offered onsite at several different locations and times that was at no cost to the employee, paid out of the wellness program. We also then had a employer challenge. Normally, you do three employer challenges in a full calendar year. This year being a half-year and 14, we just did the one, which was a hydrate challenge. Basically, it's just something, they go online, register their number of water that they drank, and earn so many points. Then those points, at the end of the session, they get wellness points towards their 150-point goal. In 2014, if they received their point goal by that December 1st date, we awarded them a $75 Visa gift card for participating and earning those points. Then we started the program for a full year in 2015. We required 200 points. We also required two mandatory activities, again, the Member Health Assessment and the Biometric Screening. We added spouse eligibility, so if the spouse was covered under their medical plan, then the spouse had the eligibility to participate in the wellness program as well, earn their points, and earn an incentive as well. Again, we offered the Biometric Screening at several locations, at no cost to the employees. We also had three employer challenges, and we strategically planned those around the year. Generally, most of them are a four-week program on the move, basically kind of how it sounds, getting you to participate in walking, biking, or running, and record those during that four-week period. The five-a-day was vegetables and fruit, to eat five a day and record those, earn points. And then the holiday weigh-in, which did last a little bit longer, I think that was a six- or eight-week program, just kind of watching what you eat during that holiday season. This, in 2015, the incentive award was $150, so the spouse or the employee could earn that. That was a Visa gift card. And then, that year, we had 396 employee retiree spouses that earned that wellness incentive. In 2015, we realized it has to be taxed, and believe me, I heard quite about the taxation, which was disappointing. We understand what the IRS rules are, so their $150 gift card really wasn't $150. In fact, it was quite somewhere around the $95 or $90. So, it was very disappointing, not only for myself, but for all of those employees that did participate, not being aware of that. So, 2016, the year that we're in now, we did do the 200-point goal. We required three mandatory requirements, the MHA, the Member Health Assessment, the Biometric Screening, and preventive care compliance. So, basically, whatever age group you're in, you have so many different preventive care compliances that you have to earn. My age group, I have to have four. My age group, I have to have four. So you can, it can be dental, it can be an eye exam, it can be your wellness exam, any of those. So those three things, each were worth 50 points. So right off the bat, if you did all three of those, you had 150 points towards your 200-point goal. We did a two-tier program. We were trying to get participation up because employees were not participating as well as we had anticipated. So what this year was two-tier. So you do your member health assessment, you do a biometric screening, we're going to award you instantly with a $100 Visa gift card. You earn the other 100 points by the end, by December 1st, we will award you another $100 Visa gift card. So that incentive, that kind of instant reward or instant gratification for earning those two mandatory items, really increased the participation. We offered three employer challenges, the two-minute drill, basically doing different activities, two minutes at a time, the step ahead, naturally a walking or running or biking activity. And then this, right now, we're in the sugar smashers, so you get points for avoiding high-sugar items during this process. I think that'll go till about the 15th of October. We did offer two different periods of time for the online, or excuse me, the biometric screening. We did them in the spring, and we did them again in the fall, so people had the opportunity to get in. Because it's a two-tier program and there's an instant reward, we had an awful lot of people wanting to get in there and get their biometric screening done, so that's why we offered a second session this fall. We have currently, as of September 1st report, 545 employees that have earned their $100 first incentive gift card. And then there is 340 of that population that are at 200 points or above. We did add coaching this year, so those individuals that wanted some further assistance with coaching, either online coaching or a one-on-one coaching, whether it would be for tobacco, nutrition, exercise, mental health, any of those types of things, they could engage in that coaching for the entire year. And I, just to give you some participation statistics, when we started back in 2014, there was 2,100-plus individuals' lives that were eligible. Those were employees and retirees. In 2015, we added the spouses, so that's what increased the eligible individuals. And then in 2016, we eliminated the retirees, because I only had three retirees out of 350 that were participating. And you have to pay a monthly fee for each individual that is eligible, so we made the choice to eliminate the retirees. And then that 2,700 is employees and spouses that are eligible to participate in the program. At the next line, earned point incentives. As you can see, those that had earned their points increased from 14 of 226 up to currently, right now, 392. Those that complete the MHA, those numbers have increased, 351 today, 683 have completed that member health assessment. And 400 completed biometrics in '14, and we've had 580 so far this year that have completed their biometrics. Preventive care compliance, really almost quadrupled from 165 to 456. And then member logins, we've almost doubled those since 2014. And then we did have coaching in '14 and '15, and we have 67 employees or spouses engaging in the coaching. So our numbers are increasing. So what's in store for 2017? We will increase the point goal to 250. I can tell you of the people, the 600 or so, or excuse me, 300, almost 400, that have 200-point goal reached, they're well beyond the 200 points. So there is a potential of getting 450, even potentially 500, earned points if you do every single activity that's available on the program. So 250 seemed like a pretty, increase the goal, keep incentive going, keep employees engaged. What we're requesting, as far as an incentive wellness earned, rather than the Visa gift card, so we can avoid the taxation issue, is going to a premium incentive. The premium incentive, should you earn your points in calendar year 2017, in calendar year 2018, you would have a reduction in your medical premium. A $25 reduction per month for the employee if they earned their points, and another $25 reduction monthly if the spouse participated. So an employee that has a spouse coverage could ultimately get a $50 discount each calendar month on their monthly premium, beginning in 2018. We would still require the three mandatory items, the member health assessment, the biometric screening, and the preventive care compliance. We'd have our three challenges, and we would do the online biometrics. So what is the rationale of moving to a premium incentive taxation issue? I think that will increase the participation of the employees. If they don't know, you're giving them a reward, and then you're going to take some of it back. This would be a one-time setup in the benefits. I can tell you, the administration of the Visa gift card is incredible amount of my time, payroll's time, because they have to enter all the information for the taxation. So this would eliminate one time, you set up a benefit plan, that's a wellness plan, so that they would get the discount. Again, one-time setup, that they would have that throughout the year. They'd see that benefit every single pay period when their premium is deducted. It would be a less premium deducted. It'd be less financial drag on the entire medical fund. When I order Visa gift cards, it's a one-month sum payment to have those gift cards on hand to distribute those each month. This would just be trickling each month if those individuals got the discount. Between 70 and 80% of companies use a premium incentive over a gift card. About 8%, excuse me, 71% of Vavari's book of business use a premium incentive. 8% provide cash, and 11% provide some additional incentive, such as a gift card at Menards or some other type of gift card. The average premium incentive credit is about $517 a year. The cash incentives are around $509, and about $512 for other types of incentives. 87% of Vavari's book of business run an engagement-type program, very similar to ours. So really, I think this is going to be a little bit twofold. I know there's a resolution pending after my presentation to approve our 2017 program design, and then also the premium incentive as opposed to the Visa gift card. I did want to talk about some of the other health and wellness initiatives that our Healthy Directions has offered over, not quite 10 years, but getting close. We've had Health Fair every year, with all of our vendors generally participating and offering up prizes for the raffle. We've had several different lunch-and-learns. In fact, currently, starting in October, I think it's going to be every Tuesday in the month of October, at the Health Center, they are having a different session for a lunch-and-learn each week. So that information is out on the Wellness website, but they have a lot of different programs that they're going to be offering and talks during the month of October. We've offered a flu clinic for the last probably eight or nine years that Healthy Directions has helped support it, because we pay for those flu shots out of our wellness budget. We have a wellness newsletter that we offer every other month. I got to give kudos to Connie Lehman, who's our graphic artist, and assists very greatly with not only the newsletter, but a lot of our flyers and the things that you see that the Wellness Committee puts out. That's the artistic abilities of Connie that helps assist do that. We've offered the mammal van onsite. This was amazing to me, that this was even of that great interest to our employees. But I, we do it twice a year. We do it in the spring. October 1st, I believe, they're going to be out here. And then the first part of November, they'll be out at the Health Center location. Several individuals have called me and said, "This is absolutely wonderful. I can go out there, it's 15, 20 minutes. I get my mammogram, and I don't have to take really off of work." Some departments have been very generous in letting the individual do it on a break time, so that has been, which is also getting those individuals doing mammograms, which is important as well. We sponsor the team for the Corporate Cup Run. We always have a design t-shirt contest that somebody will design. This year, we had 29 designs, so it was pretty difficult to pick that design, but we do sponsor that. There is also discounted memberships that other gyms have come to us and said, "We would love to give you guys a discount." We just post something on our bulletin boards, and they do that. We've offered Weight Watchers a couple of times a year. We previously have had yoga classes here and Pilates classes. So we have done quite a few wellness-type initiatives to help assist our employees. But I think first and foremost, partnering with Vavari and having a wellness vendor that helps and assists us with not only some of the challenges, but that just offers that extra online help for those employees. And I do believe the premium incentive will increase our numbers, that will hit their paycheck every single pay period. I think it's the right move to go afterward, two and a half years into the program, so.
Great. Thank you. Questions?
Commissioner Boyle. Kathy, you've done a terrific job. I was, when you came to the board, I was happy to be, I believe, the person to sponsor the resolution. It was passed unanimously, and we put some money into it, actually, which was kind of nice. But you have really taken off and run with this. It's very obvious. And so I want to thank you for the work you've done, because in my eyes, this program's successful because of you and your leadership. So, thank you.
Well, I owe it to many of those members that are on that Wellness Committee. I think there's a few of them that might have stepped in here that I had kind of asked them for support. And without those individuals, their input, you know, it's all a team.
I know it is, and that's why I described it as your leadership, because you've really been a terrific leader. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kathy, one of the things that I thought of while you were speaking, and you're talking about the lunch-and-learns, one thing we might want to work, I see Karen back here, is maybe online lunch-and-learns that we could then maybe reach more employees than them having to physically be there. So that may be something that we can talk about at one of the next meetings, but...
Right. And you know that Vavari website, they have a lot of webinars that are, each month, I think they post something a little bit different, as well as questions that individuals can sit right there at their computer and watch those webinars on different types of wellness things. But I do agree, it's difficult to try to get a lunch-and-learn started, and it's difficult to get those individuals to actually come. We did it many, many times here, but then the participation level was low. But I agree with you...
Do they get points for those?
Yes, they absolutely, oh, absolutely, yes. Yep. You go out and answer on that Vavari site, you answer the monthly questions, it's usually four or five questions, they're worth five points. If you watch a webinar, I think that's worth 10 or 15 points. It's very interesting to me how many points you can get in a very short time, once you've done the mandatory things. We want people to get their biometrics. Biometrics are going to help notify the employer where our health issues are, so that we can maybe target programs. We know diabetes is a huge issue with our population. I know just with some of the biometric screenings, a few people have called me, and they were borderline diabetic, but they were, it was found out by doing those biometrics. I think the fact that we offer those biometrics here make it very easy for the employee to participate at no cost, makes it a lot easier.
Okay. I didn't know, I don't take the insurance, so I didn't know that you could do those.
Yep, there is webinars on there, so, yep.
Commissioner Morgan?
I just want to thank you. In the five and a half years I've been here, you have a great passion about your job, and I appreciate it. And thanks for coming today.
Thank you. Great. All right. So I hope you pass the resolution. Thank you.
You want to make the motion?
So we have a resolu, so that's the presentation. If there's no other questions or comments on that from anyone, the next is item four, the resolution approving the 2017 Wellness Program Incentives.
So move.
Motion by Boyle, second by Morgan. No further questions or comments. Please vote.
Motion passes.
With that, thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
With that, we do have need for an executive session for negotiations and litigation. Is there a motion to go into the executive session?
So move.
Motion by Boyle, second by Kraft. Please vote.
One quick thing.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Boyle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Commissioner Morgan?
So right after this, we'd have your committee to go to 9:03, probably in the next 20, 30 minutes?
Yeah. It shouldn't be too long in here.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I, out of a personal privilege, I wanted to mention that two distinguished Republican friends of mine have died in the last couple of weeks. And one was a former state senator and U.S. Representative Bill Barrett from Western Nebraska. My son Jim was a page years ago. He's in his late 40s now. Sorry, Jim. But anyway, I'm glad you're late 40s. But anyway, Senator Barrett took Jim under his wing and was really a class act, and he always was. And in the House of Representatives, he helped us when I was in the mayor's office. He was just a really class act. He was what we need in elected officials across the board, listen to issues and make decisions based on the merits. So he is really missed. Terrific service. And Sam Jensen, what a character. He was an attorney at Erickson-Siderstrom. I was privileged to be of counsel out there. And Sam was very active. He was really Governor Thone's guy in Omaha. And I remember years ago, when the governor was going to appoint Steve Thomasek to the legislature, and I thought, "I wonder if he's in the district?" And I didn't think so. So I checked it out, and I called Jensen, called Sam, and I said, "Let the governor know that Steve's not in the district." And so it was kind of a, we had that kind of a relationship. And I know when President Reagan came, I was invited to be on the stage, and Sam thought that was not appropriate. So he called me and said, you know, he had a great sense of humor, and told me that, "I don't think it's a good idea you're there. I think that it probably, you shouldn't be on the stage because you're pretty partisan." And I said, "Okay, well, that's all right with me. I'm not particularly a fan of Ronald Reagan and President Reagan." And he said, "You're not going to say anything, are you?" I said, "Sam, what do you think?" And of course, I went to the World Herald immediately and told him I was disinvited. Anyway, Sam was a great guy, wonderful sense of humor, terrific lawyer. The county board hired him occasionally to represent us in labor matters, so he'll really be missed. He was a great guy. So I want to mention those two great Republicans that passed through my life.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Boyle. With that, will, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'd also like to mention that Brian Perisak, who's the head of FOP Lodge Two's, father passed away, and I'd like to extend our deepest sympathies to Brian and his family at this time. And that we would hope that he would appreciate that our thoughts and prayers are with him.
Yep, thank you.
Oh, and one more, I'm sorry. It's a sad time all around, because Steve Leclerc, who's the president of the Omaha Fire Department's union's mother, passed away as well. And we'd like to extend our deepest sympathies to him and the Leclerc family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Kraft, are you a yes?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.